All right, beginning it is now 5:18 on January 31st. I will call the special meeting to order. Present are Dave Walton, Kirk Cuffer, Steve Hofmeyer, myself, Sean Merrill. Alan McDougall is out of town. However, I am now handing my proxy from Alan over to the Secretary Kirk for the health insurance vote. So we will now proceed to the healthcare final plan change. So if Nicole could please brief us real quick on what happened with our insurance carrier after we approved the one plan?
So apparently Kim, who works for Cummings, Fraser and Associates, said that the underwriter, after receiving everything, said, "No, we're not approving this plan, but here is another plan that we will approve." And so that's what is in the final plan. It's actually slightly better with the prescriptions and the out-of-pocket maximum and at a lower monthly cost rate, which is beneficial. The biggest difference is that it's not going to be age-related anymore. It's a flat rate across the board, so an employee will be 409 across the board. And of course, we'll cover 90% of that, leaving 4090 for our employees per month. And then if you want to add a spouse and a child, the amounts are there. And of course, we have one employee that will have a spouse and a child on that. So and then we'll cover that 50%. Those are the major changes. So we need to get that approval from you so we can get that going through. As to why the underwriter changed their mind, she couldn't really give me a -- they just said that they went around and they said that, "Yeah, well, here's what we can do." And then she gave it to me, "You guys approved it," and it went back to him. And then they said, "Well, we're going to do it like this."
So did they cover you for January?
Yes, everything will still go back to January first.
Okay, all right. So you're covered, I mean, up until today?
We will be, yes, once everything goes finalized.
From what I remember, correct me if I'm wrong, that both you and Carolyn said this was a real possibility when you talked to Kim last month prior to our meeting? Because she wouldn't -- the underwriter, Kim said the underwriter wouldn't say definitively one way or the other that she would approve the plan, correct?
Right.
Okay.
But this is what the underwriter said. This is so -- as soon as we get approval from our commission, we'll get it going through and everything should be good to go.
If you all had a chance to look at this.
Any questions from you three? Any comments?
And I have spoken to the employees that would be on the insurance plan, and they're aware.
Bill, cashiers plus Colleen?
Yes, Travis. Well, Travis and Aaron and Colleen, one cashier.
And Bill and Matt.
Okay.
Are there any concerns from the staff in regards to this updated plan?
No.
No. And the comments that I have from them is it's a minimal amount of money that they would have to pay extra, $6, $7 per pay period extra, which doesn't hardship any of them.
Yeah, I need a motion.
Currently, do they have Group Health Balance 500 or something?
That was in 2013.
That's what we just approved, right?
No, the current -- what's under the current is what the insurance was for 2013. Under the original option is what you guys approved. And then the final plan is what they came back with to get your approval.
So was the United Healthcare Gold Flat Co-Pak KR8, right?
Yeah, that was the original, when you guys motioned to approve. But now it's going to move to an LP8.
Well, I would make a motion that we approve the health plan, the United Healthcare LP8, the final plan as presented for those employees that are covered.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve United Healthcare LP8 as presented. Do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous, so no recount is needed. Healthcare is finished, good to go. All right, HVAC system, we have a bearing replacement and a soft -- two separate issues. Let's hear from Matt quickly about the bearing replacement, please.
All right, yeah, the main stand system in our heating system, the main fan has two bearings on it, the front battery, and of course, with age, they've gone out. It's, you know, has a lot of slop in it right now, stuff like that. Baron, I've talked to three different companies. Baron was the first one to come out at the beginning of this week. They looked at it and they brought back -- they sent me back this proposal. At one company said, "Yeah, I don't want -- I don't even want to touch it because it's so big and laborious, you know, time constraints." And the other one has not come back to me. He said he was supposed to get to me next week. He said about Thursday of next week is what he is looking at to get this done. And that's just for him to look at it. And unfortunately, with this item, I'm afraid that if we leave it prolonged time, every morning I come in and I grease them, so it's not sitting there just eating away at itself. But, you know, you can only put a Band-Aid on a major artery for so long before it rusts loose, so.
Is it shaking bad?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's knocking and clattering. It sounds awful.
Did you have any idea why it went bad? Is it just normally used?
It's approximately 15 to 20 years old.
Well, there you go, that's why.
It's just, unfortunately, it's time.
So of the three contractors that we contacted, only one has come back with a proposal, the other one?
Yes, the other one wants to come look at it next week, Thursday of next week. This thing may not last through the weekend, unfortunately. Like I said, this is one of those.
So sooner or better, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes, unfortunately.
Now, I'm not familiar enough yet. Having put it out to three contractors and having had one come back and one state that they don't want anything to do with it, and a third stating that they can fit it into their schedule for an estimate next week, have we met the requirement?
We are below --
We're below that threshold?
We're below that threshold where we need to have three.
Is it 12,000?
Yes, so we're 10,000.
So will I motion that we authorize the expenditure of $3,522.81 plus applicable taxes for bearing heat to come replace the bearings in the assembly as outlined on the proposal?
So I have a motion to approve the proposal.
A second.
We have a second?
I would ask.
Discussion?
Discussion. This is an estimate, so if they see something unforeseen, it could go higher or possibly lower if it's standing.
Possibly.
It's pretty solid, though, you think?
Yes, yeah, that's pretty much what they -- you know, all the installers I talk to and stuff, they're pretty much solid.
Further discussion?
The work is not subject to city permits, so there's no process there.
Just repair, basically.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Any kind of timeline as to when they would do it?
As soon as I get this approved, I can get back with them.
Yeah, if they're ready.
I don't know if that -- I don't know, hopefully, you know, as soon as they can. I don't know exactly their schedule or anything.
The next item on the agenda is the Sunbelt Control Service quotation. We all received an email from Tom Johnson about this earlier this week, plus one from Matt. I think you sent it out to everybody, didn't you? Thank you very much. This is about the installation of software for the HVAC system. So Matt, you want to tell us about this, please?
Yeah, it's a computer-controlled system for our HVAC system. We've had it on a computer that is running Windows XP, a pretty much outdated system, unfortunately, with all the new systems. And from what I understand, it was -- all this was put in in 2004. And they came up with this Windows XP unit, and that's what Sunbelt was the company that put it in in '04. I've recently talked to other people about getting a different company, possibly different software and stuff. But unfortunately, to get different software, we would actually have to change everything in the back that has to do with electronics, controller of that system. And of course, that's even more money because that's more electronics, more time, more Sunbelt is one of the only manufacturers that actually has this product for pools pretty much in the northwest. I've talked recently, actually today, I've talked to some other people that actually have ITs on staff that write their own programs and set up their own units. And, yeah, we, of course, we don't have that. And so we're, unfortunately, I think we're pretty much limited to Sunbelt's proposal because, you know, I can't control it right now. It's locked me out. I can go in, look at it, see what it's doing, but I can't physically change anything. I have to go -- if I want to change something, I have to go manually back there, disassemble the electronic part and then move it by hand. And I could be doing -- I could be helping, I could be hurting on that. So, you know, this is another thing that, you know, I don't know what else, anything else that can be done.
Excellent.
What you do is just --
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, yes, I got -- I got technical stocks. They write their own systems.
Gotcha.
And of course, their system won't be compatible with ours, and to have them come up would cost probably $8,000 to this $4,000 bill. So, you know, yeah, we can get other people from other pools, other ITs from other pools, but there again, you have to pay.
Right.
I said.
You said you had some, Bill?
Well, Matt and I've had a real nice opportunity to kind of start to collaborate a little bit on this. And by the way, I've got to give my colleague a lot of kudos for things like spending four hours at a time on the phone with a, you know, with a vendor trying to problem-solve, going back and forth between what he sees in the computer and what's out there. Bottom line is, he's worked really hard to get and keep this thing moving. And it's like, you know, almost like tuning a Maserati without tools, you know? So one of the things, and I just -- Matt and I haven't yet had a chance to kind of, you know, dovetail on this, but we were asking, is there maybe another source that could provide similar kind of software for us? What kind of options do we have? And obviously, with just a short amount of time, knowing that this was, you know, on us, we don't have that liberty of time. But I did make some -- had a very fruitful conversation with a company called Desert Air, that is a national company with regional offices. And their Director of Design referred me to a company in the area called Integrated Energy Systems. And essentially, I think a very natural follow-through step for us to consider would be to get in touch with this Integrity Energy Systems. What they do is a five, four-step process. They'll go out, they'll assess the system and determine what kind of savings can be had by changeouts, what kind of funding is available. And being a public entity, we have a real nice opportunity for, you know, some public funds to be available. Do we have liberty for time? Probably not, but I don't -- that's maybe a next step. Then they'll, you know, assess what the net out-of-pocket costs would be, and then get you on a plan for looking at an overall system for replacing key elements of the system. The gentleman I spoke to, Spencer Braden, again, the Engineering Director for that region, for this region, is on the Five City Planning Commission, and they're in the middle of redoing the five pool, the very same kind of thing. So there's some options here, and it's all about energy saving, you know, the kind of money that we put into the pocket of the, you know, gas company. It may be offset over time with significant savings, and these are very real, you know? In my practice, I've done the same thing with lighting, where essentially new lighting systems oftentimes get paid for themselves, by looking at it this way. So I think it's worth looking into, it's worth a call, and, you know, again, this is fresh information, so Matt and I are just, you know, getting to know this. But I think it's a no-brainer.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
How long can we go? What are the pros and the cons to waiting to fixing a system? Keep it straightforward and simple for me.
Okay.
Thank you, please.
Pretty much Brony style.
Yes, that's what I need, thank you.
If, well, prolonged, the temperatures on the -- actually, on decks are going to change rapidly, be different each day probably, because I know what the system's doing, but I can't change it. And if it decides, "Hey, I feel like a fluctuation today," it is going to change. And when that change happens, it's going to automatically change the heat on the day. How long can we go? You know, it's hit or miss. We could go a week, or it could be tomorrow. I'm kind of interested in the system that Bill just said. I'd really like to talk to these people and get something, you know, maybe they could help us, maybe they can really help us save energy, which would be helpful.
For the benefit of the public, can you guys state what the problem is and care for this business?
Yeah, our computer no longer interfaces with our heating and HVAC system in the back. We had an upgrade to the computer, the software, and stopped me in any time. Okay, we have a new computer, and the software on the computer has locked us out now.
Actually, it's not on the new computer, it's still on the older one.
There you go.
But it has locked us out because it's a -- it's an outdated software, and that's what's happening.
Can you just roll back to the old software?
That software has been installed since 2001.
Did you say the company?
The company locked it down.
Yeah, the company, sure.
Company locked down. They no longer support XP.
No.
So the company that did that no longer?
Can you roll back to what you had before?
No.
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 We have nothing, because all of it's running on the oldest system, the oldest software right now.
The XP computer.
Last week it was working, right?
It's still working currently.
It's still working.
Yes, we got a new computer.
It's just we can't control it.
It's kind of a --
Can you control last week?
Yes.
And what did you do between last week and this?
We called the company.
We called the company for some information, we were seeking some information on upgrading to a new system and whether, what it would take for us to upgrade to their new system. And no, because they have shut it down.
And he's been on the phone for four hours for that company.
It's an internet-based program, and I can talk to the back, but to change it, it has to go on the internet. Well, my software will not go on the internet now.
And so it won't communicate with your current exact control.
No.
Now, is that something that happened on our side, or is that something that the vendor switched off?
It's a good question.
That is a good question. We have asked ourselves that same, very same question multiple times.
Does it seem to happen after you talk to them?
It happens within 24 hours of talking to them.
We actually, I, that's part of the four and a half hours on the phone call, I talked to one of their techs. We went through the entire system, front to back and sideways, and --
And you even had Tony from Waypoint on it for a couple hours too, trying to get it to --
And what did Tony say?
He can't get it to work. It just, it just won't go on to the internet.
Our browser.
To change the thing.
He can't do anything with the XP.
Is there a way we can talk to somebody besides the tech with the company and bring up to the point exactly, elevate this higher and say, "Look, within 24 hours of talking to you, we no longer have access to what we could do 24 hours or two hours prior to talking to you. So this is a public pool, you obviously made some changes on your end which stopped us from being able to function normally. We need you to reinstall that or stop that until we get a change."
I've talked to Steve on this, and of course, this is the guy that first this proposal. I've talked to him about it, and he says, "We were just running on borrowed time." He said he had talked to the director four years ago and was saying, you know, "Our software needs to be updated before it just, you know, quits working one day." And, yeah, it's, and the tech even said that he was down here four years ago and going over the system. So does it smell fishy? Yeah.
If it looks like a duck, acts like a duck, it's a duck. So can we?
Just Steve, the owner of the company?
No, he does not.
Can we, can we talk to somebody and elevate this before we spend $4,100?
It's a cause, I'm telling you, but it doesn't make any sense to make a decision.
We need, we need to know more before we --
Yeah.
I feel, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I agree.
So.
I mean, I hate the fact that we are now operating manually because we don't know what that is doing and how, and the changes we made today is going to affect the system future in a row. But it does absolutely, more than coincidence, seem as if --
I agree.
Is it Sunbelt Controls that currently has the, or the web control software that we're currently using, it seemed as if it was just speculation here, so let that be on the record. But it seems to be as if the company has decided to stop allowing us to use it as it was to force the upgrade.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was thinking too. Now, Sunbelt Controls and Adco, Adco is the program, Sunbelt Controls is who installs it. We have talked to many people at Adco, and they're saying that they don't even support Windows XP anymore. So does that sound like maybe we're running on borrowed time? Yes. But like I said, it's still kind of, you know, coincidence that, you know, we start talking about upgrades and all of a sudden, bam, you know, we're locked out of the system.
I'd like to suggest that we table this until we have more information next week.
Yes.
If we have to call another special meeting between the first week in February and our regular scheduled meeting, we can always do that, given 24-hour notice. But I really think, unless there's an objection from the board as a whole, that we table this until we have more information.
But I'd make a motion that we table it.
Yeah.
And I'm very curious to know what we can find out here on Monday, Tuesday, from this other vendor.
Okay, so I have a motion from Dave.
You have a motion to table this until the regular meeting or until the event would precipitate to emergency meeting.
A motion to table until the regular meeting or a need for a special meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir?
You know, I've got a little bit of expertise in operating systems and programming and stuff, so if you were likely to sit in on the calls, it could be beneficial to you.
I think that would be awesome. Matt, if you could, please.
Because sometimes, if you don't understand what you're talking about and you don't ask the right questions, you may not get the right answers. Certainly, if you're going with a software or a system vendor, they like to force upgrades and we don't, just put a cash in our pocket.
That would be awesome, thank you.
Okay, yes. So I'll give you my number, and you can give me a call. I'm pretty much available on the phone.
Okay.
I have a second, good motion. I have a second from Steve. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The last bit of business, we're going to let Erica talk about this. This is, the reason this is brought up in the special meetings, because I believe the funds need to be approved quickly and can't wait until our regular meeting. So if you could give us the rundown real quick of this, please, I would appreciate it.
Sure, and this is an opportunity for our aerobics coordinator, Michelle Reedy, to get some very much, very badly needed training. Mark Revelding is one of America's top aerobics trainers. He does not come this way very often, if, I think maybe this is the first time he's been up north of Seattle. He is running a certification course in Anna Portis at the end of April. Couple of reasons that Michelle really should have this training is, first of all, this training would help her build the program, a little bit further, expand the program to what she has it now. Secondly, we have a contract with Silver and Fit right now. Our Zumba class is what's keeping us eligible for that class. This training would expand our eligibility should our Zumba classes fall flat on their face for whatever reason, or need to take a month off or something like this. Her certification with the Aquatic Exercise Association would allow her to offer classes that would keep us eligible underneath our contract with Silver and Fit. She has, she currently does not have certification in any aerobics area at all. She's just doing it, just learning as she goes. She's very, very interested in continuing her education in this area to expand our programs to offer additional training. This class would take her everywhere from her personal interests, which is deep water aerobics, all the way down to working with patients who have special needs and arthritis. So she would get training in all of this. She would also get new moves, exercise routines, new ideas, new program opportunities, and the cost would include all the materials that she could bring back and hold to training with her instructors and be able to show them ways that they could improve their existing programs as well. So the cost is $325, and I would like for us as a district to be able to pay for her to go to that training. Normally, this training runs between $500 and $600. This is a pretty good deal, and it does not involve her to travel. She would just need to go to Anna Portis, and she could come home and, you know, sleep at home and not have to do any hotels or anything like that. The $325 does include all of her materials, her class fees, her testing fees, the DVDs, the manuals, and everything that she would need underneath one of America's best trainers. And she's very excited, she'd very much like to do it, but for her personally, funds are an issue even with that amount. So I told her that I'd be bringing it before you guys, to see whether we could possibly look at paying that for her. One of the reasons that it's expedient that we get on this is because the registration for this man's classes goes like hotcakes. First of all, they are opening this up to people from Idaho, Canada, California, Oregon, Washington, and it's just, it's going like crazy. I do have the gal over in Anna Portis, their aquatic director, has penciled her in for a spot, but she can't hold that spot until payments. So that's one of the reasons I would like to, if we are able to authorize for the district to pay for her to take that training. She is, one of the things I did check was that she was planning to remain employed at the district, which she is.
That's good. It's always good.
I do have, unfortunately, a comment. Having been through the running club demise and seeing what's happened with Enrec, I would say this, if the district, if we as the board decide to pay for this, we need to let Michelle know that all the DVDs and that all that stuff is district property.
Everybody told you that.
Oh, fantastic, thanks, because I hate saying that, because you always sound like such a stool pigeon, but it would have to be.
I told her that the evangelism DVDs would need to remain on site and would act as a resource for not only herself, but for the other aerobics instructors as well, that they would be able to check out, take home, or watch here and then bring back.
Erica, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Oops, sorry. Ali, can you hear your voice on?
Sure.
Just because, you know, we have a lot of issues with things blowing up, is it possible that she could devise a very simple sort of in-kind remuneration to the district, to compensate, you know, the balance, the district picking up her expense?
Well, she actually does volunteer quite a bit of time when the food handlers permit for a lot of our --
I'm just saying, if you, if you, very likely, it'd be very easy to -- It's difficult, I'm just saying, if you, if you, very likely, very easy, that structured in-kind donation that would, if someone made an issue with this, let's say it was an in-kind, we're equal.
Now, as, as, um, some jobs in, I don't know necessarily if the world of instructors gets into this, but some jobs require certain certifications in order to have them. For example, with my professional career, I have to have certain certifications to be employed with my employer for the position that I have. This appears to directly benefit the patrons, you know, the popular water aerobics class, while looking at number one, would allow the district to maintain its Silver and Fit program, which it's worked hard to get, which is a financial benefit to the district itself. I think that, you know, I appreciate Ms. Miller's volunteering for things with food handlers, cars and whatnot, but I think this is an expense that would be well suited. Looking at, at the budget that we adopted, we do have $4,500 in the training line item under NWPRD expenses. Is there any other training that would be coming up through this year that would exhaust that $4,500 or above what? I mean, does this put us up above the $4,500 that we've already budgeted?
For training for our water aerobics?
It doesn't get specific.
I think that goes into the, yeah, that goes in a lifeguard training.
This goes into lifeguard training, and what I have done with the lifeguard training has gone from every month to every other month. And I can, I plan to continue that, so we're trying to cut costs in that area. I don't have any problem with it coming out of my budget for the training for her. If, if that's possible, then I can go ahead and just make sure that I'm trying to cut my training back even more if I need to for some of the instructors. And I do have, there are ways to do that, where I can get instruct, lifeguards to come in during the end of a lifeguarding class and just hop in for a couple of rescues, there are ways to do that as well.
So the $4,500 in the training budget is specifically for lifeguard?
It's for lifeguards and some lesson instructors. I don't know that the aerobics doesn't have their own line item, but if it is, it's probably pretty small.
I don't think we've ever, we've ever budgeted.
They walked in.
Yeah, we've ever budgeted money for aerobic instructor.
When Michelle ordered aerobic supplies last year, and she only did one thing, she never asked for anything.
She never asks for anything, that's the other thing with her.
She, I think it came out of a pool supplies.
Okay. Yeah, the aerobic supplies we have budgeted $600.
Okay, there you go, because she got noodles last year and that was it. But she's also the one to go out and clean them and take care of them and make sure that they stay nice.
I'm getting, I'm getting a high sign, I'm going to make sure we're not interrupting a date night here.
I would make a motion if the district created $325 for Michelle Reedy to participate in the aerobics class at the Padala Pool Fitness Center in Anna Portis, Washington, on April 26th and 27th of 2014.
I have a motion to approve the $325 for Michelle Reedy to attend the aerobic class on April 26th and 27th, 2014. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All, that motion passes unanimously, no more call needed. That is the last thing on our special meeting.
I would make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion for adjournment, do I have a second? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned, thank you all for staying on Friday.